Okay. Nova, you ready? Okay. I'll go ahead and I'd like to welcome everybody to the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly Regular Meeting. We are in the Assembly Chambers. It is Thursday, March 16th, 2023 at 6:30 PM. Invocation will be by Major Dave Davies of the Salvation Army. Thank you.
Senior Member of the Assembly. How about that? Sweet, sweet. Well, you know, every day is tricky and some days are trickier than others. I want to thank you for your service to our community. Join me, please. Gracious Heavenly Father, we just take a moment to give you the praise and glory for the privilege and the freedom to gather here this evening. Father, we come seeking a fresh anointing upon our senior member and our fellow members of the Assembly and staff. Father, there's a great deal of duty and dedication that these individuals are giving to us. We just ask your continued blessing upon them as they serve the Island community. Thank you, Father, for your continued blessing. In Jesus' name, we pray amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have the Statement of Land Acknowledgement. We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Supiakalutic people, and we acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiakalutic region. We recognize the Lutic culture that enriches our community to this day. Roll call, please.
Mr. Arnt.
Here.
Mr. Delgado.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Lidu.
Here.
Mr. Smiley. Mr. Smith. Mr. Turner.
Here.
Mayor Williams. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Move to excuse Mayor Williams, Assembly Members Smiley and Smith, who are out on personal leave.
Second.
Voice vote on the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item we have is approval of the Agenda and Consent Agenda. Mr. Turner?
Move to approve the Agenda and Consent Agenda.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. For the public, I would state that the Consent Agenda consists of the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 16th, 2023, a special meeting minutes of February 23rd, 2023, and February 27th, 2023. So, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item we have is Citizens Comments. This is Agenda Items Not Scheduled for Public Hearing and General Comments. The phone numbers here, the local number is 907-486-3231. Toll-free number is 1-855-492-9202. And please sign in and state your name for the record. Turn on the mic before speaking and address all remarks to the Assembly as a body and not to any individual member thereof. And if you're calling in, turn off any listening devices to prevent feedback. Go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Court Neff, and I am glad to be here with you guys. I've been kind of, I've been with you in spirit. I've been watching online. I haven't been here personally. Hopefully, you haven't missed me too much. I've missed you guys a bit, but anyway, it's good to see you all. So, I have to say, you guys really pulled one out of your hat when you got Mayor Amy Williams to be our next Borough Manager, and I'm very interested to see how this comes. It's like you're making Borough Government exciting again. I was sitting there watching the meeting and it's like, to discuss the Borough Manager, the next thing you know, I proposed Amy Williams. I'm like, yes, yes, yes. Wow, you did a good job keeping that one quiet. I didn't have a clue. So, I think it's got exciting potential. I was talking to a couple of people. I know you're considering some hospital expenditures, and somebody was bringing up the possibility of a needs study. And I've really been kind of going, you know, that's a big question. How do we know what we need, you know, separating needs versus wants? And it's very difficult sometimes and to really, I know as a Planning and Zoning Commissioner member, I, we were doing capital projects, and there were some things I felt personally that was more of a, wasn't really a need. And, but, you know, it is something right now, we're in times right now of financial questions, people having a lot of financial questions. So, I do think it's probably a time to lean towards needs rather than wants in our government spending. I know sometimes wants is part of our spending. People just, a lot of the community just wants something, and that's okay. But there's a time to buckle down, too. And so anyways, I encourage that idea, I mean, the idea of a needs study on the hospital, it seems like a good idea. I don't know how, I mean, do these things really work? Is it, sometimes I wonder, we have standard professionals that go and analyze things and come up with an answer, but I've wondered possibly about just doing surveys in the community, maybe those being more effective and determining needs. Like, would you use this, or do you find a need for this sort of thing in a park or whatever? Like, we have a park at the bottom of Opaunmalue. In my neighborhood, which I've used a little bit with my family, but honestly, it's almost never used. It had vandalism, and it was ultimately kind of torn down and some of it. And I have seen a little bit of skateboard park and stuff being used by people there somewhat, but in the summertime, kids, but very little use. As much as I actually kind of liked the little park, it isn't something that I see would have been a need if, and that maybe it could have been avoided if we had a survey of the neighborhood and say, would you use this park for this? Or, and it doesn't seem to be something the general community wants to use, wanted to use ever. I'm just going by personal subjective experience. Obviously, I didn't do an exact study or anything, which is, you know, the trouble with this sort of thing. But I do do a lot of walks and just kind of an example, an idea, suggestion, encouragement to just always ask yourself, is this a need or is this a want? Thank you.
Thank you, Court. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Good evening, Assembly Members. My name is Bill Oliver, and I'm the Vice President of Senior Center of Kodiak, Inc. I'm here this evening to report to you concerning our activities for the first half of our fiscal year. During this period, we provided 11,873 meals, some in-house, some home-delivered, and an ever-increasing number by curbside pickup. Four hundred and ninety-four different seniors participate in this program. Forty-one seniors and their families took advantage of our Adult Daycare Program. Over 4,400 rides were given to ninety-six seniors through CATS, the Kodiak Area Transport System. One hundred and thirty-eight clients received information about Medicare, housing assistance, and other benefits that they might have been dealing with. Our agency has the only Medicare counselor on the island. We provide lifeline services to sixty-two seniors. We provided support to over forty people who are acting as unpaid caregiver to an elderly family member. Ten families were given respite relief. Nineteen seniors received chore service. We provide non-Medicaid case management to twenty-three seniors. We expect all these numbers to increase during the last two quarters of the fiscal year, especially meals, adult daycare, and lifeline service. All of these services are vital for keeping people age sixty and older living the good life in their own homes in our community. As the Kodiak Island senior population continues to grow, I want to thank you again for your continuing support of our programs. In other news, we're undergoing our fifth re-certification by the National Institute of Senior Centers and the National Council on Aging. The process involves a self-evaluation against nine criteria and then review by outside evaluators. The other big deal is that this September, we'll celebrate our fiftieth anniversary. To have come from our beginning in the Commons Room at Bayview Terrace to the program that we have today would not have been possible without the local support, including yours, that we have enjoyed. Thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone online? Anyone else wishing to come forward? Please do. Hearing and seeing none, we'll close Citizens Comments. Next item we have is Committee Reports. Do we have any Committee Reports, Assembly Members? Seeing none, I'll move on to, next item is Borough Managers Report.
Yes, good evening. A couple of things. Our new vehicles are parked out front. Please don't get fingerprints on them. We were able to, we're able to utilize the trip to pick them up also to visit the DEC. And with Jacobs Engineering, we had a couple of very productive meetings with the DEC. I don't like to expend funds without trying to get the most bang for our buck. And we were able also to talk to the lone folks at DEC, so it was quite a worthwhile trip for the borough in general. The one thing I want to point out, well, actually, on the very first item is the FY24 Community Assistance from the state. If you're about four or five pages back, the Grant and Funding Status Report for 2023 is in here. However, I will state that after reading this and getting a follow-up email and including it, this is based on a $20 million calculation, when the actual dollars assigned were closer to thirty. So, this report shows what was based on 20 million, so the numbers that are on here are going to increase. And that is normally distributed something, I believe it's September, August, September. So, this gives you at least an idea of where the communities stand for this particular assistance.
Dave, just a quick question. I see like basically communities are listed twice, two different.
I haven't figured that out yet. I'll get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
The other items are, the big item that I wanted to talk about was, we have another case of a critical emergency failure at the hospital. The chiller compressor has, is basically going bad. There's either, they haven't figured out if it's bearings or what exactly it is, but it is twenty-seven years old. It's original. It was 1996 installation, and the cost that I received today was $47,402.40, which is slightly above the $25,000 that I'm to authorize. However, I did authorize this on an emergency. If the Assembly would like, I can put this before you for approval, but it's going to take several weeks to get this. If this compressor motor dies, there'll be no capacity to utilize this chiller. There's also a string of emails attached here that goes through the whole discussion about why this chiller compressor is going. The part that I guess bothers me a bit about spending this dollars is that although we need to keep that unit going, we're going to need to look at a long-term investment in the heating ventilation system, which includes this chiller. So, here we are going to spend $47,000 on a chiller compressor that will likely need to be replaced in the next couple of years and not be able to be utilized because of the update of the system. But we need to keep the hospital functional. I'm going to make a comment. I wouldn't normally do this, but I listened to what Mr. Neff said because one of the items tonight is about the study, and I will comment on Mr. Neff's comments at that point in time. We are going to ask to delay that award, and I'll explain that when we get to it. If there are any other questions associated with my report, please, you know where to find me. I'm happy to engage, and I will leave it at that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dave. One thing you were asking about was the expenditure for that motor. It falls under the emergency powers, but I'd like to see a follow-up beyond the agenda for approval, is all. It's fully understood that this stuff comes up, but it just kind of tracks it better on there. So, if you would do that, thank you. Anyone else have any other comments? Hearing and seeing none, then I'll move on to Messages from the Borough Mayor. No additional messages. Yeah. Next item is New Business Contracts. We have contract number FY2023-42, Kodiak Island Borough Purchase of Two GMC Pickup Trucks from Swickard Auto Group. Mr. Turner?
Move to authorize the Borough Manager to award contract of FY2023-42, a bid to Swickard Auto Group, and proceed with purchasing two 2023 GMC Sierras for borough use in the amount of $85,038.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Dave?
Yes, the Engineering and Facilities Department, per the Borough Purchasing Code, advertised and received two proposals for what was considered light trucks. The Swickard Auto Group of Anchorage proposed two GMC Sierra pickup trucks in the light category, and this price, the $85,038, includes freight to Kodiak. And we're going to have a conversation with them if this is awarded to see if there is a way we can reduce that freight cost as we did with the vehicles that are over here. We are requesting approval of this particular procurement per the former direction of the Assembly.
Thank you. Any Assembly Discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five zero.
Next item we have is Contract Number FY2023-43, Employment Contract Between the Kodiak Island Borough Assembly and Amy Williams as Borough Manager. Mr. Turner?
Move to approve Contract Number FY2023-43, Employment Contract Between the Kodiak Island Borough and Ms. Amy Williams as Borough Manager.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any Assembly Discussion? Okay, basically, the contract that you have here was what Scott Smiley and I had worked on with Amy, and she was in agreement, and you have it before you. So, that's what I have to say there right now. So, seeing no further discussion, Joe?
I'd like to say that we've been working on this since I got on the Assembly, so it's finally, it's good to see that we have an end to this. We did try, we had people from across the country apply. We looked at, I don't even know how many applications, resumes. We looked deeply into at least twenty of them, and I can't remember how many we interviewed personally. Managers are hard to find, both in Alaska and even across the US. So, I'm happy that we found somebody. The last two tries were kind of disappointing, but I'm encouraged now, so thank you.
Thank you, Joe. And with that, I'll add for the public there, too. The Borough Manager position has been vacant since June 21st, 2022, and the process of hiring for the Kodiak Island Borough Manager started in July of 2022. The Kodiak Island Borough has advertised for this position and interviewed several candidates. At least one offer was made and was declined by the candidate. On March 27th, 2023, the Assembly unanimously appointed Ms. Amy Williams as Borough Manager and directed Assembly Members Smiley and Arnt to negotiate a contract which is attached in this packet. So, just for everyone's information, it's part of the public record on there. So, any further, Mr. Turner?
I'd like to add that she's not going to start until after her time with Discover Kodiak, which is May 1st or 2nd.
Yeah, sometime after May 1st.
But I'd also like to thank Mr. Conrad for filling in while we were in need, and appreciate his efforts, and that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Any other further comments? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you. Next item we have is Resolution Number FY2023-26, Agreeing to Accept Additional Opioid Settlement Revenues Negotiated by the State of Alaska. Mr. Turner?
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY2023-26.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, Dave?
So, I'll take this one. Dora is very sick, went home early today. So, you've seen this before. There was an ordinance similar to this originally, you know, approved like a year or so ago. With this resolution approval, the Assembly will agree to the terms of settlements negotiated by the State of Alaska with the distributors and pharmacies dealing with opioids. As the State of Alaska continues to negotiate settlements with the various distributors and pharmacies, the borough will be receiving additional settlements as they are completed and resolved. This resolution will authorize the manager and the attorney to accept on behalf of the borough both this and future opioid settlements negotiated by the state, which involves the borough.
Thank you. Any questions by the Assembly? Mr. Turner?
So, we've discussed this a lot, but I do have a question of an article that I read this last week about the US doing the same thing, the federal government doing the same thing as what the State of Alaska has done. And so, this kind of keeps us out of the loop on any federal settlement in this because we are basically settling with those stores, manufacturers, whatever you want to call them.
I don't know if that's actually the case. I can speak to the Borough Attorney regarding that. I know that the State of Alaska was involved in this class action lawsuit with a number of other states. I don't know if that precludes us because I'm not aware of the parameters of the federal legislation. One would think that the feds also, there was a lot of cost to the federal government as well, so perhaps them recouping some of those dollars affects all of us tax-paying citizens as well. But we absolutely can look into if this precludes us from participating in that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five zero.
Next item is Ordinances for Introduction, and we have, the first one is Ordinance Number FY2023-13, Amending Kodiak Island Borough Title 17 Zoning, Chapter 180 Signs, Section 17.180.010 Signs Description and Intent to Require Zoning Compliance Permits for Certain Signs. Mr. Turner?
Move to Advance Ordinance Number FY2023-13 to Public Hearing at the next Regular Meeting of the Assembly.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Staff report, please, Seema?
Good evening. This is the second time in the second round that you guys have seen this ordinance. It was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on February 22nd, 2023, and has been moved forward to you. It does not encompass all signs, only the signs that need a zoning compliance or a building permit are affected by this.
Any discussion or questions? Thank you, Seema. Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Lidu.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five zero.
Next item is Ordinance Number FY2023-15, Amending Title 7 Elections, Chapter 7.40, Canvassing and Certification of Election Returns, Section 7.40.010 Canvas of Returns. Mr. Turner?
Move to Advance Ordinance Number FY2023-15 to Public Hearing at the next Regular Meeting of the Assembly.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Staff report, I'll give this to you, Nova.
Thank you, Assembly Members. KIB Section 7.40.010 details the procedure for canvassing of election returns. And in KIBC 7.40.010C, currently states that marked ballots that are not in small gray envelopes shall not be counted. After review of relevant state statutes, it appears that it doesn't identify failure to use the small gray envelope as a basis for challenging or rejecting a ballot. I have sent out an inquiry to other municipalities as well, and the response was unanimous that they do not reject returned ballots that are not in gray envelopes. I think the concern about failure to use the envelope is that it allows the canvas board to know how a particular voter voted. Based on my experience, the canvassing board has a track record of always protecting the privacy of voters, and there are ways in the canvassing procedure that we can incorporate to protect the privacy of the ballots. I put this before you because I believe that even one ballot is a very important ballot, and it could make a difference. So, I ask that you approve or advance this ordinance to public hearing. Thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions also.
Any Assembly Discussion? Jerry?
Yeah, Nova, so is the, I'm looking specifically at line 63 in the ordinance. I have a couple of questions. So, is the small gray envelope, is that a universal, like do all precincts, all areas, they use the exact same universal standard small gray envelope?
This small gray envelope is being used for absentee by mail, for absentee voting and the by mail, and then also for question ballots and the special needs ballots. For regular voting, they use the folder, but for those that are mailed out or those that are questioned, so they have the gray secrecy sleeve. The issue that we have been seeing in the past is that the ones that we mail out, sometimes they disregard the gray envelope. And I think if a person or voter made the effort of returning the ballot, if the canvas board can make sure that we are protecting the secrecy of that vote, I think they should still be counted.
Yeah, I agree with you 100%. I guess my question is, are these envelopes, like it's just an interesting, like specific detail that's in the ordinance? Is it, are the envelopes Is it, are the envelopes always small or the envelopes always gray? And then there's also the word any.
Yes.
Any gray envelope. They can go to Walmart and buy a gray envelope?
Uh, there, there's a particular size for them, and there's, and they're gray. So they, we've always used them gray secrecy sleeves.
Okay. Well, we'll never change to orange or fluorescent pink?
As far as I, I've worked for the Borough for more than 20 years now, and they, we've always used the gray envelope. So we haven't changed them to another color or another size. Thank you.
Any other questions? I'd like to thank Nova, too, for finding this. Um, it's been overlooked for too long. So I appreciate bringing it to us to correct. Thank you. Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Ligu.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five zero.
Next item on the agenda is, um, Authorization, Authorization To Award Contract Number FY 2019-10S, Change Order Number 19 For The Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center And Kodiak Community Health Center Space Analysis And Planning To Jensen Yorba Wall. Mr. Turner?
Move to postpone the authorization, uh, excuse me. Move to postpone the contract FY 2019-10S, Change Order Number 19, To Jensen Yorba Wall, Inc., In The Amount Of $276,283 For The Providence Island, Excuse me, Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center And Kodiak Community Health Center To Provide Space Analysis And Planning To Understand The Current And Future State Of The Facilities.
And when?
Mr. Arnt, um, procedure, uh, I would like you to, if your desire is to postpone this, move to postpone is a secondary motion, so you need to make a main, main motion before you can do a secondary motion.
Well, I can't make a secondary if I make a main.
Yes, someone has to make the primary motion, and then you can do your secondary motion right after. Thank you.
Mr. Turner or Larry, would you make the motion, please?
Move To Authorize The Borough Manager To Execute Contract Number FY 2019-10S, Change Order Number 19 To Jensen Yorba Wall Incorporated In The Amount Of $276,283 For The Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center And Kodiak Community Health Center To Provide Space Analysis And Planning To Understand The Current And Future State Of The Facilities.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And then discussion will go to the staff report. Dave Conrad?
So I, I will say that with, with trepidation, I will agree with the pending change that's coming up here. Uh, per questions that you, Mr. Arnt, Assembly Member Arnt, made last week, um, I did speak with Corey Wall of JYW, and he was of the opinion that there was sufficient information in here that did state that there would be community interaction. It didn't necessarily state each of the, uh, health, um, providers. However, the intent was that there would be contact. With comments made this evening, um, this study is to look at what the needs are to either endorse additional construction or advance of construction, as well as to look at whether or not we need to expend those funds. So unfortunately, government sometimes needs to look forward and needs to do studies to do projections of this nature. And this is the appropriate forum to do it. And we have the attention of the, um, healthcare providers that are within the facilities that the Kodiak Island Borough owns. But also, we need to look at what the other healthcare providers are providing. The reason we're asking to delay this vote is because we could not get a hold of the subcontractor. And when they did, as of today, they need to look at their schedule because they do not want to make a commitment to the Borough that they cannot uphold a timeframe. So they want to provide us with a new realistic timeframe. And I believe that is a better way before we tie up these funds. The other thing is, this proposal that's before you is a year old. So consequently, if they need to look at, you know, altering their costs or even add some verbiage so that questions asked last week will be covered, that that would be more appropriate and it'll be giving the Borough Assembly a much fuller package to peruse and approve or disapprove. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Turner?
Thank you for that. Um, so what I was, um, what I was going to do was motion to, uh, postpone as we've got the new group meeting, uh, on the facility. And, um, I think that we need to invite, um, another entity in, in Kodiak or at least, uh, at least one more, um, to the table for discussion because the, in the past, we've had something presented to us by one of the other medical providers in the community about building another, um, facility, um, to satisfy their needs, uh, basically giving them, um, some land or leasing them some land so that they could build a facility, um, similar to what Providence is doing now. And I think that if we can get that entity to the table, then I think that, uh, we can come up with a single solution for at least three, if not more, of our community partnerships, um, and make sure that we have enough space in the facility to, uh, to encompass all of them, um, instead of, instead of spreading out and maybe conflicting in two different facilities. And, uh, I think that we can bring some of this to the table, uh, in the not-too-distant future. And I was kind of thinking sometime in May, so at least they get two meetings or three meetings under their belt. Um, but...
Yeah. Dave, I'll let you go, and then I've got some.
Yeah, the, I believe the next, I can barely read this calendar the way it is. I believe the next meeting is May?
8th.
8th would be the next meeting of the committee. But I also would like to state that the committee was the driving force and directed us to go ahead and move this forward. So, go ahead.
Continue.
So, um, I, I do appreciate that, but we didn't have some of the information that I procured this week that, um, some of the other parties are interested in coming to that table and, as well as, um, the parties that we're discussing now. So I'm trying to keep it clean, but, um, I think everybody knows what I'm talking about. But, um, if that's the case, then we may want to delay it a little bit longer. But I don't know if it's really necessary to go past the next meeting.
Oh, it is. It, it would, I would look at, it would come up, I would say the second meeting in June, so you get past the budget on here. And then I've got some comments to make, but that's, would be my suggestion.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to bring up the motion until everybody else gets a chance to speak.
Thank you. So I'd like to say a few things, Dave, like I was speaking last week. There, it, and I don't know that a needs assessment is the right, um, terminology to use, but I remember finding out here that all of these large organizations, Providence, the Community Health Center, CANA, they basically have to do their own needs assessment thing, I've found out, every two years. And, um, and it looks like, I, I don't know where each organization is in that, but, um, that helps. Maybe part of the last one can be used, too. But, but I want to make sure we get, like I said, everyone to the table on this. So it's a complete community assessment for, for everyone. And, um, and I'm, I'm hopeful that we can work, you know, create something, like I said, that benefits everyone, because my concern is, we're all going to live with this for the next 50 years. And, um, I'd like to try and get it right. And so, um, you know, I, June may not be enough, but I'm thinking that that would be a better time, um, with the budget stuff. That'll start here in, in April. Um, that gives us April, May, and June on the first part of June. We have to have the budget approved by June 10th. So, um, so that's why I was looking at the, second meeting, which is the 21st of, excuse me, 22nd. Well, it is hard to read, but the light.
The 15th of June, second meeting or?
Oh, 15th of June, yeah.
The second meeting in July, I mean, $22,000, which one do you want?
I was looking at the 15th of June. So, but just a suggestion. Larry?
Um, Assembly Member Turner's comments, I think, are very persuasive. I, I think that, you know, the potential of competing healthcare providers in town is not going to help anybody, and I think anything that we do is, shouldn't facilitate that. I, I guess the question I have for Dave is, I don't like doing anything in June because we ran into the summer and people aren't there, and you can't get people together. So really, what we're doing is we're delaying it probably until the fall, for all intents and purposes. But I don't necessarily think that's a bad thing. Because it gives time for us to sit down and talk without trying to rush things because as you said, Scott, this is for the long run. And I'm just wondering if we delayed it, you know, this study, until everybody is at the table and we figure out where we're going and what we're doing. Um, can we wait until the fall?
Dave?
I'm composing my response.
I understand. I'm just calling on you.
Um, I, I don't think that it needs to wait that long. I believe the intent was to speak with all healthcare providers. I am having some difficulties reading between the lines tonight and would like to have a more, um, direct conversation with, uh, Assembly Member Turner. Um, I also know that the further we delay this, we have entities that are applying for grant funds. And I think the decisions made associated with this are going to potentially have a cause and effect on funds that are available today because of the pandemic and because of the recent, uh, funds that are made available through the federal systems. So that would be my major concern. Um, I think that this is going to take a while. I believe if you look at the schedule, it was multiple months and intensive, several weeks here in Kodiak doing interviews. It's going to take a while.
James?
So I, I know this is my last bite of the apple, but, um, I'll try and speak a little plainer. I had a conversation with, uh, a person at, um, the hospital, and I had a conversation with a person at the larger healthcare provider, uh, next, um, and both of them are interested in working together as much as possible so that they're not bringing in competing, um, situations. And by housing them all in the same building, they feel that that's the best way to maybe provide for that. And so that's why I wanted to delay. But I also see the benefit of doing this, but I want to make sure that it's encompassed, that we're talking, and the way that you said earlier, you are in, are, are going to try and get them encompassed in this, uh, survey. Um, I, I think that maybe if, um, maybe the direction is to postpone until, I think, May is fine. But, um, I'll wait till the other Assembly Member's comment. But I think that if you have that same conversation or a similar conversation as the manager with those two entities, well, you probably want to include the three of them since the other one is housed there as well. But I think that that would be, um, enough to move forward with at, at, in May.
Dave?
I work at the direction of the Borough Assembly. You tell me where to go.
Okay. Jared?
Um, yep, I, I'm with, uh, Assembly Member Turner. I, I don't, really don't see a reason, um, we can put this on the calendar in May. June might be okay, too, but, um, I think, I think there's enough. And, um, and looking in the proposal, I think it's going to get us what we want, or I guess what we need, um, uh, to, to start making plans. So, um, yeah, I'm with, uh, I'm with James on this one.
Okay. Any other discussion? James, you want, oh, Dave?
So perhaps the thing to do, the suggestion I'm going to make is, I, I don't care what day you pick, but what we probably need to do is just invite the other parties to the next meeting in that, uh, May timeframe, that May 8th meeting. And, uh, work on that. There's, there's nothing that precludes us from inviting the rest of the entities that are involved in providing healthcare services here.
You know, and there's some other private clinics, too. Don't hurt to invite them as far as what the needs are. Mr. Turner?
So, uh, if everybody's good, I'm going to, uh, move to postpone contract FY 2019-10S, Change Order Number 19 With Jensen Yorba Wall, Inc., um, For The Providence Kodiak Island Medical Center And Kodiak Community Health Center To Provide Space Analysis And Planning To Understand The Current And Future States Of The Facilities To May 18th.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to postpone this until May, the meet, regular meeting of May 18th. Uh, discussion on the motion to postpone only. Seeing none? Roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Ligu.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, five zero.
Thank you, May 18th. Okay. Next item is, um, Approval Of A Transportation Agreement To Reimburse Relocation Expenses For The Proposed Candidate For The PC Tech One. Larry? I look both ways, don't anyone, when you get called on.
Move To Approve The Transportation Agreement For Reimbursing Relocation Expenses Of The Proposed Candidate For The PC Tech One For An Amount Not To Exceed $4,800 Or The Equivalent Of One Month's Salary.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Um, staff report, please. Dave?
Uh, the Personnel Manual and also the Union Contract requires that any, uh, any payment for, of or for the reimbursement for relocation expenses be approved by both the Borough Manager and as well as the Assembly. So consequently, this is before you. We have a candidate that has accepted a position. And before we move forward, we need a, uh, we need to make sure that this is, uh, approved by the Assembly. And I want to remind you that there are repayment schedules. If this particular individual does not fulfill, uh, certain parameters, that, uh, it will be repaid to the Borough for those expenses. I will also mention that staff is working on a change, a suggested change, with the attorney. As this is within the Borough Manager's, uh, signature authority, under $25,000, we're going to make a suggestion to the Assembly that this is a personnel matter, and the Borough Manager is indeed in charge with personnel and should not have Borough Manager is indeed in charge with personnel and should not have to come before the Assembly for approval because of the fact that there is a schedule to be reimbursed. That will be coming to you in the future, however, that is not before you tonight. This is simply the approval for this particular candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Joe?
I have no question, just that I'm in favor of this. It's good to get people to fill our jobs, and we know how hard it is sometimes, so I'm in favor. Thank you.
Larry?
I agree, there needs to be a change. I think the Assembly needs to stick to policy and let the management to the manager, so I just want you to know that I certainly, what you said certainly resonates with me.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call vote on the motion, please.
Mr. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Liddoo.
Yes.
Mr. Turner.
Yes.
Mr. Arnt.
Yes.
Mr. Delgado.
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries, five zero.
Thank you. Next item we have is citizens' comments. Once again, the local number is nine oh seven, four eight six, three two three one, toll-free numbers one eight five five, four nine two, nine two zero two. And we'll wait a minute, see if anybody wants to call in. Basically, if you call in, have you turned any listening devices to prevent feedback? And we'll wait a moment here as we have lost our audience here. Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to Assemblymember comments. Larry?
I have no comments.
Okay. Jared?
None for me.
Joe?
No comments tonight.
James?
I think I talked enough.
And I have no comments, so I'll go ahead and read the, "The Borough Assembly and School District Board will hold a joint work session on Thursday, March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three, at six thirty P. M. in the School District Conference Room. And the Assembly will hold a special budget work session on Saturday, March twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, at nine A. M. in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next Assembly work session is scheduled for Thursday, March thirtieth, at six thirty P. M. in the Borough Assembly Chambers. The next regular meeting is scheduled for Thursday, April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six thirty P. M. in the Borough Assembly Chambers. For the public's information, the Borough Offices will be closed on Monday, March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, in observance of Seward's Day holiday." Chair to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post? You don't get to post. Meeting's over. Thank you all for attending.
Happy birthdays to you. The next case is going to be for my awards.